So they, I just wanted to honor and recognize my personal gratitude. And gratitude on behalf of the district for the legacy that this particular initiative will leave for our kids and the students of Pasco and the community for really decades to come. So I just really wanted to commend them for their, their extreme commitment. Ms. Nunnamaker will talk about each of them individually have put in over 100 hours and the committee in total have put in over 3,000 hours in commitment to this process. So again, I just wanted to recognize that and personally thank them and professionally thank them on behalf of the district. So with that, I will turn it over to Leanne Nunnamaker.
And I'd say, before Leanne starts, I'd say thank you from the board for that effort too. And we appreciate it and are excited to see the impact that it has on our kids, but also on teachers and, and the learning process. And I'd remind everyone, for those of you who don't come to the board often, we broadcast these meetings, study sessions and our normal board meetings on channel 199, or 191 on Charter Cable, Charter PSC, and it is also on the school districts YouTube for those who aren't, YouTube site who aren't able to attend and would like to see what we talk about in our study sessions and board meetings. Thank you, Leanne.
Well, hello. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon to share with you the culminating work of the curriculum committees. Joining me to present some of the information are some of the members from our curriculum review committees. This afternoon's workshop will provide you with an overview of the process the curriculum review committees followed and the recommendations the instructional materials committee unanimously agreed to bring forth for your consideration. We will also inform you of next steps as well as estimated costs for the materials. As you have heard in the monthly board reports, the curriculum committees have been working diligently since October to select math and ELA, or EL, excuse me, English Language Arts or ELA materials to bring them forward for adoption. On March 14th, the committees presented their recommendations to the instructional materials committee, also known as the IMC. The IMC is a committee that is established by law and district policy and is made up by parents, teachers and district administrators. It is a responsibility of the IMC to review the recommendations from curriculum committees to ensure they align with the district policy and state law, and then bring those recommendations to the board. Having said that, we will not be asking for a decision today, but we'll be bringing this back for your approval at the next board meeting. Do you guys wanna come up here while I read the slide? In mid-October, a group of 25 parents, teachers and administrators convened to collaboratively develop a process that would aid them in the identification of a core set of materials for K-12 math and K-12 ELA. The committees met almost weekly until mid-March. During this window of time, there were several times the members worked two to three times, or three, two to three nights a week for three to five hours. Keep in mind that these hours were put in after a full day of work. During this time, each member spent up to approximately 108 hours meeting and scoring materials. Collectively, this group, along with the additional teachers that were brought in to help score the materials, spent approximately 3,000 hours. It is important to note that the committee members put in a great deal of thought and effort into this work. The dedication and commitment they demonstrated throughout this process is to be commended. And I thank you. And thank you for coming tonight, too. So I've invited the members of the committee that agreed to come and help present tonight, and I would like to introduce them now. This is Brenda Wilson. Sorry. I know all their names, but now I'm going blank. Brenda Wilson, Kristen Renn, Beth Austin, Tanya Huffman, Corey Heitmet and Brian Torrance. And then we also have some members from, some other members that were on the committees that are here for moral support. Could you stand and be recognized? I saw Diane Hart and Tiffany Air is one of our parents. And Maria. Yes, that's right. I haven't seen you for a long time. It was like, I know, thanks. Thank you. And then a few of the IMC members were able to also join us tonight. Thomas Duval, would you stand up? And Becky Hitchman.
Amy.
And Amanda, thank you. I was gonna say your name. Amanda's here, too. So I thank them for being here. So they are going to help present the selection process and the recommendations that are, that they brought to the IMC for your consideration for both math and English Language Arts. And when they are finished, I will show the next steps and estimated costs.
Hi. I appreciate your time and ear to hear our process today. My name is Beth Austin. I teach 4th grade at Livingston. And I'm gonna share with you our process for selection and how this process began. And as you hear from all of us tonight, you'll hear all the different steps that it took us to get to our recommendation today. The curriculum committee determined that there was a need to move forward with a formal adoption for each grade level in ELA and math K through 12. Our evidence came from the following sources that you see on the screen. We had survey, surveys for teachers, parents and principals on their perception data, to get perception data on our current materials. Then following that, we had a third-party external review called the PDK report. PDK stands for Phi Delta Kappa. It is a professional educational research group that reviews materials, and they reviewed our current Pasco materials and resources. We also continued with an alignment study where we researched other states' reviews of the instructional materials. We utilized a group called EdReports, who is given unbiased review of materials for school districts. And we looked at, looked for materials that met our current Washington State learning standards. Through this process, we were able to narrow down our search to the three materials that we continue to review further.
Hi, I'm Brenda Wilson. I teach special education at McGee Elementary. So as a whole committee, we used compression planning to discuss items that must be included in a set of instructional resources. If the must-haves were not found, then those materials were no longer looked at. As you can see, one of the must-haves was that the instructional resources had to be available in both English and Spanish for courses where students need instruction in their first language. We also agreed that the instructional resources needed to be differentiated and scaffolded for the many types of learners we have within our district. We also created a list of most critical items. One of those criteria was that it was research-based with success in other districts. We reviewed other states as well as other local districts to see the types of instructional resources that they used. And finally, we looked at our common values. We looked at things such as student engagement and ensuring that our students with special needs receive appropriate instructional materials.
Alright, so after, excuse me, after narrowing down our choices of three for both ELA and for math, we, our next goal was to select a rubric to score these materials. So as a committee reviewed a variety of rubrics, these rubrics included, these included rubrics used by states such as Oregon, California, and Idaho, and Louisiana as well. After reviewing these, our choice was the instructional materials evaluation toolkit, or easier, just the IMET. Shorten that down a little bit. This one, a nice thing with the IMET tool is that it is a tool recommended by OSPI. Excuse me. By choosing IMET, we're able to ensure materials will provide scaffolding, the materials we chose would be, would provide scaffolding, differentiation interventions, suggestions on planning, as well as address the shifts that come along with the Washington State learning standards. Those shifts being focused coherence and rigor within the new material, within the news, within the new standards. All of us received a one-day intensive training, a very intensive training, right? In this room, very intensive training. It allowed us to work together to, to be able to score material, or to be able to understand how to score materials, to be able to collaborate, build scoring consistency. So we were all on the same page, looking at the same thing, understanding what we were looking at, what we needed to look at within the materials. And again, this is for both ELA and for mathematics.
So after we had completed the IMET scoring, which was an intensive process, we then sat down and looked at the parent surveys and the staff surveys. And I think you have copies of some of the highlights from them in your, in your binder that was provided to you. And all of the, the parents and staffs were given multiple opportunities and multiple ways that they could participate and have their voices heard, and have their, express their opinions. And the last step, after we had finished IMET scoring, was to combine those three things together, to look at the teacher surveys, to look at the parent surveys, and then IMET scoring, and kind of, all at the same time, compare them all, review them all. And then from there, we selected, made our final recommendations. And after we had done the final recommendations, then we went to what was called a bias screener. The bias screener incorporates part of what Pasco has a form for that, for the bias screener, and then the Washington State has its own recommended form. So it's kind of a combination of the two. And that's where we sat down with every single book, every single chapter, and we flipped through, and you look for any type of negative stereotypes as far as gender, multicultural, persons with disabilities, socioeconomic status, family appropriateness, all of those to find any kind of a prejudice or negative stereotypes that, that could be found in the materials. And, and none of them, none of them had anything that would have any alarms.
My name is Tanya Huffman. I'm a 3rd grade bilingual teacher at Vergey Robinson Elementary. And I'm here to present the recommendation for the K-6 mathematics. So after using our initial research and the IMET rubric, we determined that math expressions best meets the needs of the K-6 students here in the Pasco school districts. And here is some of our evidence to prove that. First, math expressions properly supports the Washington State learning standards, as well as assesses students on the appropriate grade level standards, meaning that the assessments that are provided don't extend beyond what the students are expected to know in each grade level. In fact, Math Expressions was authored by Dr. Karen Fuson, who helped research the standards that we use. In addition, Math Expressions boasts several levels of differentiation that include three tiers of support for struggling learners, ELL support, and advanced activities for students who are ready to challenge themselves, all while staying within those grade level standards. Another strength of Math Expressions is the way the materials support the grade level standards. The majority of the time is spent on the major work of the grade level, meaning, for instance, in 3rd grade, multiplication and division is considered major work of the grade level. The majority, a majority of our time is spent teaching multiplication and division. Students therefore are provided more time to master those important grade level concepts. For these reasons and more, we recommend the adoption of expressions for our K-6 Pasco classrooms.
For the 7th through 12th grade, we had recommended Agile Mind. It is the highest percentage of work that's covered in 5 of 6 grade levels, clearly aligned to the standards. And it includes materials that have online animations, graphics and problems that scaffold students. It includes complete online access to materials, animations, notes and problems through most devices for students outside of school or inside of school. All of these help to help balance the conceptual and procedural fluency. Conceptual deals with more of the why of mathematics. Procedural deals with practice of mathematics and actually doing the practice problems. Lastly, some of the things that it does, it has a strong comprehensive program that follows a student from 7th through their high school courses. And that was pointed out in a lot of the parent surveys that were given, was just to have a consistency among the middle school and the high school between the math curriculums. And then also in the PDK report. And in doing that, in creating that consistency, there's gonna be more of an alignment from school to school, middle school to middle school, but also between the middle school to the high school for high school courses that are offered at the middle school. And this program currently has some online components that can already be implemented with our current technology that we have in Pasco. And it has kind of a modern approach that can be updated and adapted as you progress through the years, so that it's not just current from the time the book was published, but it can adapt and, and be updated as, as standards and things continue to change or, or just to have different practices and different lessons incorporated, so.
I'm Kristen Renn, 4th grade teacher at Livingston. After utilizing the tools discussed in the previous slides, our recommendation is for the adoption of Journeys and its counterpart, Cenderos, in Spanish for ELA instructional materials for K through 6th grade. The Washington State learning standards are clearly identifiable in each lesson which align to the state summit of assessment. Writing, grammar, speaking and listening lessons are embedded within the overall ELA instruction, thereby creating a comprehensive and cohesive ELA plan. Rich, complex texts from nationally recognized published authors meet the criteria established for placement at each grade level and provide scaffolded opportunities for student interaction with Tier 2 vocabulary. Tier 2 vocabulary would be words used across multiple content areas that our students will be expected to understand in a variety of settings or applications. Each lesson provides intervention supports for struggling students, ELL students, and opportunities for extension for highly capable students. Our district has developed a balanced literacy framework, including best practices, which is fully complemented and supported in Journeys. Performance tasks and questioning progress through the depth of knowledge levels, beginning with simple recall through analyzing and evaluating. This is important for our students so that we can move them from the surface-level questions asking what, to the more critical thinking questions of how and why in both reading and writing.
I'm gonna pretend to be Lindsay Fangman, who couldn't join us this evening, but it's really not. I'm gonna speak about the recommendation for grades 7 through 11 ELA. And before I start, Kristen mentioned that there was a, about the depths web of know, depth of knowledge, the DOK document, and there should be a copy also in the resource binder for you. So, Collections is the recommendation for grades 7 through 11 ELA. Collections is aligned to the Washington State learning standards and to the shifts, which are the key changes in the standards. This means there are many opportunities for students to build knowledge through content-rich nonfiction, read, write and speak grounded in evidence from text, both literary and nonfiction, and have regular practice with complex text and its academic language. The texts are engaging and incorporate many centuries and cultures, something that is very important to the Pasco parents. Scaffolds are built-in for all learners, including text-dependent questions that build upon one another and represent the depth of knowledge where students think critically and are able to analyze. The materials provide students with many, many opportunities to discuss texts, including Socratic seminars, debates and academic peer discussions. There is also a multitude of teacher support, including professional development videos. At this time, there is no recommendation for the 12th grade World Literature elective. The committee and staff reviewed what was available from the publishers and found that there is no consistency with what the publishers have to offer, and there's really no clear national focus on what it should look like. The high school staff is satisfied with their current World Literature materials as they meet their current needs. However, we will continue to work with them and the 12th grade teachers and the committee members to find materials that will meet their course objectives and standards. Moving forward, the curriculum department will host an exhibition where parents, teachers and community members are invited to look at the materials. It will be held on April 18th and 19th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM here at the Booth Building. The components that will be highlighted are the online pieces, as well as the books and materials that children will be bringing home. We will work with the special education, Spanish and Russian language teach, Spanish and Russian language teachers and English language development teachers to review the recommended materials for the purpose of identifying what components will work and what other resources may be needed to address the needs of their students. For example, at the high schools and middle schools, there are students who will need math delivered in their first language of Spanish. Teachers will identify those additional resources that will be needed to ensure that their students meet the standards, and we will purchase them. We will engage teachers in the work of developing curriculum and assessment guides, which will establish common pacing of lessons and assessments. The guides will provide teachers with strategies they can use to adjust the lessons to meet the needs of their varying, to meet the varying needs of the students they serve. The new materials will require, require professional development for our teachers and administrators. Initial, initial training will be provided by the publishers beginning in August, and we will continue to work with them to determine further offerings. As data is analyzed, other training needs will be identified and a plan will be developed. The estimated budget for the recommended materials is $5.6 million and is based on our current student enrollment. The price for each includes some initial professional development and all of the resources teachers will need to implement these programs in their classrooms. The estimated prices reflect a one-time purchase cost that is good for six years, except for Agile Mind, which is a three-year proposal. This total cost reflects what we pay for the number of students we currently have enrolled and includes the online access and the annual replacement cost of the student activity books, also known as consumables. As student enrollment increases, we will need to purchase materials as needed, whether it is a full classroom package or just additional student activity books. The cost of a full classroom set of materials will vary depending on the grade level, the program and the language it is published in, and it would range anywhere from $2,500 to $10,000. Individual student activity books for Journeys, Cenderos, Collections and Math Expressions cost around $10.50 a piece to replace, and for Agile Mind, it will cost $15 for middle schools and around $19 for high school students. However, we would continue to work with our vendors to get the best possible deal that we can get, because the more we order, they, they bundle them and they give us a deal. This year, we spent close to $393,000 for student activity books to support grades K through 5 math investigations and connected math for 6th grade. Springboard student activity books were purchased for the ELA teachers in grades 7 through 11. This slide is important as it illustrates a one-year cost for student activity books. For example, we spent $174,300 on springboard student activity books this year. If we multiply that number by six years, it comes out to be approximately $2,353,000, and that's just for the activity books. The estimated cost of Collections is $800,000, and this price includes all the materials as well as the replacement activity books and online access for the next six years for grades 7 through 11. As you can see, we have a lot of exciting work ahead of us to ensure consistency and fidelity across the system. We look forward to learning together in order to meet the needs of our teachers as well as our students. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'd like to also thank the members who graciously came from the committees to help us tonight and be our, our support. We will be, we're, we're gonna thank you for your time and your consideration of the recommendations, and we will be bringing them back to you on April 26th for formal approval. May I answer any questions for you?
You know what? I, I am like feeling excited, like it's Christmas inside, you know, that anticipation? This is something I have dreamed about. I'm gonna get emotional, this is stupid. Anyway, if anybody knows me on the board, this is something I've dreamed about for, for years. It's part of why I got on the board, because, because I knew we needed, we needed a curriculum across the board, across the district that we were all using. I knew we needed common formative assessments, because those are the really, the assessments that matter, not so many of these summative assessments that we don't necessarily need. And then, and then I knew that, and then these facilitate PLCs so much in helping get our students where they go. And I love what you've done. I'm thrilled with, I'm thrilled with the detail that you went into. I have kids across the board, from special needs to highly capable, and I love that that played into so much of this, and so that all of my children will be served despite their limitations or their, their capabilities. So, thank you so much for all of your work. So, sorry, I don't usually get emotional here, but that's, anyway, I just want to say thank you. I do have a couple of questions. One of my main concerns is, as we were looking through curriculum more intensely this summer, we realized that some of the curriculum we actually currently had was being used by some top school districts, but our training lacked. So have, is that something that, and maybe you can answer that, is that something that the board is responsible for, the district? Or do we have a, a plan to go forward to make sure that not only, and these trainings are going to be, to happen, but also that we have a, well, we just have an inordinate amount of new teachers, because we, our district is growing so quickly. So, so how, how are we gonna go forward in making sure these teachers are trained on a regular basis?
So we've been working with the vendors, and we have a plan, like I said, there is, in the initial cost, there is some initial PD that's offered. We are currently talking with them about the potential of up to a three, an initial three-year plan that builds in initial teaching, and then continuation training that will happen. So as new teachers come on, they will continue to be trained. So we're looking at a three-year estimate for what would that look like, and then what would it look like for the next six years for the life of what we have? And then if we choose to use the materials beyond that six-year span or the three-year for the Agile Mind, then what we will do was, we will look into further professional development opportunities. So we are working with the vendor on that. And then we will do some other training with, do you wanna help address that, too?
The training with?
The coaches? Or anything? Yes? Yeah? Okay.
Can I clarify really quickly?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I'm either hearing a seven-year plan before we review this again, or nine? What, so we will, we will have training for sure throughout those years, and then we'll review?
Yes. What we're looking at right now is, they're giving us an initial for just three years right now. That was our initial cost. But then we asked for what would it look like for six years? And this is just initially working with Hoot and Mifflin for the Journeys, the Math Expressions and the Collections.
Journeys Math and not the Agile?
Now, Agile Minds is a different vendor, and so we've been working with that, and Megan and Carla, I won't, they have a three-year PD plan.
Okay. At that point, will we be able to offer trainings within, and is that plan in place within the district, and is that plan in place and going to continue?
That's, our goal is to do a train the trainer type of model, and so that we build capacity within our, our schools and our, our staff that they can continue to provide that professional development for our teachers.
So where all of our teachers get training then for three years, so that they, because I know it's like drinking probably from a fire hose, and the first year is tough, and, and the second year, they will continue, all of our junior teachers will continue to get trained, and the third year as well, or would that just be for new incoming teachers?
So the, and again, right now, we're kind of in a draft kind of conversations with the publishers, but our plan is, right now, we're gonna come back, I think like Leanne said, with a proposal for a three and a six-year professional development plan. That encompasses training for all of our teachers, whether they're brand-new teachers, and really differentiate for them. It also includes PD for principals of what to look for, what to monitor, where are we loose and tight in the materials? So it's really a comprehensive professional development plan for, again, the three and six years. And within that plan, what we've also talked about is opportunities to come together with the people providing the training and the, the Hoot and Mifflin, and then make some adjustments based on, okay, let's take, kind of take the temperature of where we're at, where the needs are, based off of all those things, what principals are seeing, what teachers are feeling, the needs are, and make adjustments. So, again, yeah, it's, it's, it will be the work of what we do, and so the plan is gonna be fairly detailed in terms of professional development, and everyone will be included.
Thank you. That's very important to me and something I hope to continue to see. So does this cost that you have just take into account the training this year, and will it completely pay for the training that we are going to need this summer?
So there, this, this has some what they call gratis, which gratis in Spanish is free, so I thought that was funny, they were using that word, but it's, so this comes with some free trainings, and then there's in addition to this. So, and that's what we're looking at, too, the three to six years is in addition to this, so really implementing like Cadillac model of professional development for the future.
So there might be some extra costs this summer for, for additional training?
Correct.
And we figured that in, and, okay?
Right. So we have expenditure budget.
Right, so we have expenditure budgets within our, our, our general fund every year for professional development, and those, those budgets over the next six years or however long will be targeted toward detailed professional development around these materials. And so, you know, instead of offering the professional development that we have in the past, we will have, we will prioritize this professional development, because what we know is if we want our teachers to do a great job with implementation of these materials, then we need to get targeted and focused, so we may not offer as, as varied of menus of professional developments as we have in the past, so we'll get really deep around the materials. And so, our current expenditure budgets will be prioritized to take care of that need.
Great.
Yeah.
Then the sixth grade, are we, if we ever move sixth grade back to the junior highs, will their curriculum still remain the same, since right now they're in the elementary school tract? Will it go more toward the high school junior high tract, or will it remain the same, and they'll just have two different sets of curriculum at the middle school level?
Well, I wanna say with the ELA, I'll speak to the ELA piece, is the journeys and the Cinderos, it's a K6, and it's very similar. The collections is kind of an additional add-on, so it's really kind of, it's, it's a K12 program is really what it is. So, there should be no loss of integrity or fidelity within the program and what it looks like from grade level to grade level. So, if, if it goes back, if our middle school takes sixth grade back again, the ELA program should be fine. I'm gonna let Megan or Carla address the math. Sorry.
I think the great things with the materials and the committee members would probably could answer this as well, is that it, it addresses the standards. It really is, you know, when they did the I met scoring, it's about meeting the grade level expectations of what kids need to learn, and so the materials certainly do that, whether it, it's, the math expressions at sixth grade, whether sixth grade is at the elementary or the middle school. Now, certainly, there's other, you know, you know, considerations if it's six years, you know, at that time, when that happens, could you reevaluate? I think those are all possibilities, but the materials address the grade level standards, so there shouldn't be a concern with regards to are the materials appropriate, whether sixth grade is housed at the middle school or the elementary. It meets the, what, what the purposes of the materials.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have a quick one then. The journeys, Cinderos, you said you can get it K through 12. Is that common for all the curriculums like Collections, Springboard, Pearson, like could you get that for K through six as well as seven through 12, or is there usually a break with sixth grade going both ways?
The, the backstory with the journeys and Cinderos, what we learned from our, our vendor was, they, like I said, it's a K12 program. It costs a lot of money for them to change the name of journeys and Cinderos to collections. So, they left it for this 2017 for, for journeys, they left it. When they go to republish it, it'll be probably named Collections, and it'll be K12 Collections. So, basically, it's the same package or the same program, it's just different names. Springboard is only grades six through, I think, 11. I don't think, no, they did send us something 12th grade, but the world lit thing was, that elective was different, so that's why we didn't look at that. As far as Pearson Literature, I don't recall, when you guys were looking at the, the, the materials, was there anything that made it go K? Okay, yeah. So, I, I think it depends on the publisher and the audience that they're actually trying to cater to, the grade levels.
Is there, is there a ma, are the math programs by the same providers as well? They just name them different things?
Most of them grow at fifth or sixth grade. We only had a choice of K to five or K to six, and then, and then it went six or seven to 12.
But like expressions, is there a, whatever, seven to 12, does it name something different, or they don't provide it? Okay, not provided. That's just a journeys and collections thing where it goes all the way?
So, I do have another question concerning our, our K6, because they are going to be implementing two brand-new curriculums that consist of the vast majority of their day. How are these teachers feeling about this, and how do you feel that they will be able to accommodate this? Because that's been, that's been a major concern of mine from the very beginning.
Would you like to hear from the teachers?
Sure, I would love to hear from the teachers. I think they might know this better than.
They could not be more excited.
Really, you'll, you'll be fine?
Absolutely.
Learning, you guys know it more, how about your?
Because the, we know the standards already, and so knowing the standards, we're able to very quickly look at a lesson and really pull off those meaningful pieces of the lesson. So, having material is just amazing. So, and the fact that we'll have it universally across the district is just amazing.
You know, one, one thing we've talked about at this board that's really critical and important is that we, that we hear a lot more about student achievement in our board meetings. So, hopefully with this new curriculum, we are gonna get some really detailed, and, and we, we don't care if things are failing or succeeding, we just wanna know how things are going, and how we can continue things, and if it's failing, then what we can do to change it. So, I am hoping we have many, many opportunities in the next, you know, year, the next school year, to hear from you and hear how things are going, and, and the successes and the failures, and, and what we've learned from it, and, and what we can do to make it better, because, because we, we're a world-class district, and, and we, we are capable of more than we are giving right now, and I think this is going to help.
I think too, when I mentioned that we would be putting together curriculum guides this summer, that's gonna help, especially with our new teachers, because what will, probably will be overwhelming for some of them, I remember being a new teacher myself 100 years ago, but opening up a basal and looking at everything there and thinking, wow, I have to do everything in here, so our goal would be to say, these are the things that you really have to cover and teach well for your kids to be able to meet the standards, and these other things, they're nice to do if you have the time. So, that's our goal and our hope that we would do, and then we would be able to go back and revisit what's working and what's not working and, and adjust it. So, it's, it's constantly in draft, and we're revising so that we are meeting those goals, and we're having more successes than failures.
Great, thank you.
So, I wanted to say thank you. It sounds like you guys have put a lot of work into this. I know nothing about curriculum, so I am relying on you guys and your experience to be able to make this work, and I, I trust that it'll work. I'm not questioning you, I'm just letting you know that I'm relying on you. One of the things, whether right or wrong, my perception is a part of the challenge we've had with curriculum in the past, is we just haven't had good control of it. Some of it may have been old and just because of our growth, we're, just weren't able to keep up, and one of the concerns I have too is that the, that we're consistent across the district. I felt like there was some inconsistency between schools and, and so, and I think this is one of the things that we're, we're concerned about as a board, and Amy has talked about this, that we get consistent implementation, that our new teachers and our older teachers, more experienced teachers are teaching consistently across the, across the district. So, I think it's critical that we get started correctly this summer with training, or whatever it is, whenever that takes place, so that we're, so that we're consistent. And, and I think we as a board are committed to supporting you and making that happen. So, I, I think that's the primary thing, is just that it's consistent across the, across our district, that our teachers are teaching the same thing, and that, that we can keep some fidelity in this. And so, one of the reasons we found out about this was the teachers, that feedback came from teachers, and, and I'm confident our administrators will, will make this happen. I think they, they understand how important it is to us, but your feedback also is important too, that, that, that we know, that we get some feedback on, on how this is going. I'm excited about it, you know, again, I don't know anything about it. I, I hope this was just head and shoulders above the rest of them, and this is just gonna be wonderful across the district, and, and all of our teachers will sign up, but, that would be my primary concern or goal, is that we have some consistency and, and that we maintain that, not just at the beginning, but as we go through. I don't know, we're talking about six years of professional development, I hope that doesn't mean it's gonna take us six years to learn this, but that we maintain consistency for six years and beyond, if we choose to go beyond. But, thank you for your work, it sounds like a lot of work, and I'm excited to see this going forward.
Isn't six years about the time that we'd need to review it and see if we want to return, re, continue on with it or replace it?
You know, there, there used to be in-state law where it was every seven years. With the new policy and procedure and around the law with that, there, there really is, it's, you can, you can set as a district what you wanna do. I think the data's gonna drive a lot of our decision-making, and if it's working and we're not using a lot of supplemental things to fill gaps, I, I think we would continue to use it, again, if, if it's making success for our kids. So, did you wanna add something, Michelle?
Well, part of the curriculum, the comprehensive curriculum management system that I presented real early on in the fall was this concept of the curriculum review cycle. So, that is under development, part of that is getting the recommendation from the curriculum committee, and then we'll start to, to develop the cycle. In the, the, the policy that you guys approved in the fall, that right out of the gates, we came out with an, I think, a very innovative policy around curriculum, that also has a procedure, and there's a mechanism in that procedure that honors teachers in requesting the review of materials. So, we would look to our professionals who boots on the ground in the classrooms every day doing the work, and giving us guidance in terms of what's working and not working, and how do we make sure that they have the, the best tools that are available to do, to do their craft. So, and that's a piece in the procedure that's new for us. And again, it's, it's a new, and innovative, and a refreshed approach to the way that we've, we've done curriculum in Pasco.
I just want to let all of you know how much we appreciate all the hard work and the commitment that you made to, to, to do this program. I know that you spent a lot of time and a lot of hours and a lot of time away from your family, and I just, I just want you to know how much we appreciate it. I know it was a tough job, and I thought about you many times when we were in here doing things and you were over on the other side, and I know you spent a lot of time, and I, I want you to know how much I appreciate all that you did. I, I really appreciate it. You, you did a terrific job, and I thank you for it.
Sheri, I just wanna add, I would, I would be with the board doing other things, and I would pop through and, and check just to see what was going on. The, the level of enthusiasm and the positive energy around the work, like I knew these guys were working five hours a night, three hours, and you would never know it by their, I mean, they were always just so positive, and the energy was such, so amazing, just great attitudes, and the teamwork and collaboration was really, really quite contagious, you know, they, they did a fantastic job, and it just was inspiring as someone who has made this work my, my professional life, to watch people do that work was really, really a gift. So, thank you for acknowledging that.
And even though the cost came in over budget, which we all knew it would, I think you've done a great job at getting what we needed for a reasonable cost, because my estimations from the different districts I contacted are much, much higher than that. So, I commend you for, for keeping in mind the, the abilities of, of the budget in order to handle this, and, and I just, you know, all the way around, I'm thrilled with the progress, I'm thrilled with where we've come from, so thank you.
I had a couple of questions. First of all, so as a member of the class of 2016, I will get to experience some of this. But I will have some freshmen coming in with a class of 2020, and I'm sure they'll be able to experience some of this. I was just wondering, like, how is their math in high school any different than maybe what I had in high school?
I'm gonna defer that to the math experts.
My point of thought, it'll be, I think with the online component, it'd be much more interactive. It'll be much more hands-on opportunities to, to really look at what's going on and dive into the conceptual part, you know, you can, there's, there's kind of a skateboard, so you can see how time changes, you know, your, you know, rate of change. You know, there's a simple way to do that. There, it's, I think it's just much more engaging, interactive, you know, the, and for simple things, it's not a book that's 14 years old. It's new and, you know, talks about things that you guys as, you know, students talk about. You know, cell phone plans that make sense. It doesn't talk about, you know, VHS and VCRs and stuff, but it, and I think to keep doing the game, but I think just the online component that, that it has, it's much more, you can go over that slide show again, you can look at it again, you can, you know, just, you know, that big old heavy book, you don't have to go find it, you can, you can search things, you know, with technology and with, you know, what students have now, they have 24/7 access, most students have that.
And some, and some of the parts that, like, for example, when you work out a math problem, and you would, you know, middle school, high school, and you were trying to decide if you were right or wrong, you wouldn't know till the next day when you got in class, the teacher, you had to schedule the teacher, look at the answer sheet. There's some online components to this where you get that instant feedback, and if you're not getting it right, it actually gives you hints and walks you through it. So, some of those components are just a little bit more modern to kind of help students guide themselves in their own thinking outside of school when the teacher's not there. And then the other part, I think, is for consistency through the seventh through the 12th grade. As a kid progresses through their years in Pasco, seeing some of the components and structures that are the same from year to year, even from like a middle school course where in seventh grade and eighth grade, all of a sudden they're finding themselves in an algebra course, and it's still similar structures. I think, I think you can, you can just have some consistency that'll help some things.
The other question I had was, so like with curriculum, I know that there's like certain guidelines that teachers have to meet and stuff like that, but I have like a lot of teachers that like to add like their own, you know, style, their own spin on things. Is there a lot of room for that?
Yeah, I think there's, yeah, this is kind of the base, and we all put our, yeah, I think there'd be plenty of room to, you have the materials there, and you're gonna see the certain animation, you're gonna see the, what to practice, the example, but I might have an example that also looks well with that, that isn't part of that, so I can have that in, and that'll be part of that, the curriculum guides, and when we, when we do professional development, and when we sit together, we'll be able to, hey, you know, 99% of this, but let's, this, we need this extra little piece here, or, hey, I got this idea, and that's, that's something too where having a 7-12 will be nice, you know, I can find it, I can talk to the middle school about the exact same thing, you know, or I can look at the exact same thing out of the net, and, you know, that hasn't necessarily been the case, so there will be those opportunities. And one more thing I wanna add too, is, is the parent component. They, you know, they can get into us too and sit down with their student, with their, with their kids, and, and work alongside with them, and the examples can be helpful to them too, where they can, they can see everything, everybody can see pretty much everything, which is very great.
What about the autonomy that the P teachers currently have in the classrooms? You know, they fought for that, I think, back in 2007 or '09, really wanting to do what they wanted to do with their own curriculum in the classrooms. And I've talked to a few teachers who are not nearly as excited about this new phase in life as I am. How are we going to draw those teachers in and get everybody on board?
It goes back to meeting the standards. Our responsibility as teachers is having our students meet the standards, and we can still have like Brian said, adding our own spin and our own flavor, but if we have sound material, we need those standards really strongly, we can use those with fidelity. And, you know, add our flavor, add our personality, that's where they became teachers, but know that our responsibility as teachers is to teach our students the standards that are structured.
And you think there's gonna be buy-in from all the teachers?
I think there's gonna be a huge, I mean, we've done a lot of talking with teachers in our buildings and in other buildings, and I think like Kristen said, there's just a huge amount of excitement and weight off our shoulders of, these are materials that will meet our needs, and I think there's more excitement than reservation.
The two things that came up over and over in our initial process was having something for that brand-new teacher, so they don't walk in and go, oh my gosh, what am I doing? I have to figure everything. And then that second piece of just having that universal language spoken across the district, that we not are literally on the same page, but we are figuratively on the same page. We all know that, you know, if I have students reading a period coming to Livingston, that we should be in about the same place spacing-wise, and we should be speaking the same language in terms of, you know, what our expectations are, so.
I think Ms. Phil, I think that's great, and it goes back to Mr. Chris's comment on consistency. Now I know what all my fourth grade kids, it doesn't matter what classroom it came from, the fourth grade, Livingston, what building, now it's more consistent, I know what skills are gonna have, so I can take that and go for it.
And the same terminology.
I think they're pretty excited.
It's huge.
Thank you for all the work that you've done, and, you know, I don't know how many people think it was as simple maybe just going to Amazon and looking up like math curriculum for schools or something, but But it was obviously much more complicated than that. You wish it would, yeah. I think the, some of the next steps, it was brought up the, the curriculum adoption cycle. I think that will be huge for our community just so that they can quickly just see, okay, in 2016, 17, we're going to be reviewing science and social studies. 2017, 2018, whatever. And then 2021, 22, English and math together. You know, so that they can just see that five-year cycle. I think that's going to be huge from a community standpoint. I heard a number of concerns about getting the supplemental materials, having enough for students, having all the materials that they needed. But it sounded, Ms. Nundermaker, you said that we're pretty much getting everything. But I, I heard that from a number of people that were concerned that we were just getting portions of what was available and, and that they wouldn't receive an adequate supply. But is that?
No, they will get the full, full meal deal.
Full shebang.
The full shebang, yeah.
Very good.
Can I just ask you a question? How much of this is online and how much is going to be in books like this? Or is it?
That is a great question. Um, everything, there's a, most of all the teachers' materials will be online and they'll have that access for the six or three-year proposal period. And then all the student consumables are also, those will also be online, so they can run the Black Line Masters. There's ebook readers, um, so.
Students be taking books home or will?
They can, um, they can, but they should be able to access a lot of things online also. And that will be, what's really nice, when we talked with the Hoot and Mifflin vendor who does collections and Journey Sanderos, and I'm not sure about math expressions, probably the same thing. One of the things that they're going to showcase the evening that they're here is some of those things, they'll, they'll have a technology station where they can show parents some of those things. But then they will also come back and do some parent nights that will be able to share, these are what these materials have to offer and what you're, what you can do with them at home with your kids. So, it's going to be pretty cool.
That'll be good. I remember my kids bringing math problems home and I'm saying, well, what did you learn in class? And they're going, where's your book? And I, anyway. As long as they have access to that material, as a parent, it would have been very helpful if I had that.
And no more lost homework. I'm hoping that I can access the homework online and say, mm, sorry, you're doing it anyway.
Yeah, here's, here's the worksheet right here. We're going to write, print it right off, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a balance, right? Some, there's some things that you want to read, right? Or that you want to, I mean, we actually order magazines for our children. Curriculum, the beautiful stories, beautiful literature that's holding it, sitting with my child in my lap. You really can't get that with an iPad and they're on technology and screens all day. And, you know, they always want to be on that anyways. So any moment I get where I can actually have a physical book, can check it out from the library. I'm all about technology, but there's something to be said for that, that type of engagement with your child where it's easier to let them take the iPad, the tablet with the work and just do it themselves, whereas something physical engages you more with your child. I appreciate that aspect of that. But since we're on the topic of, of materials, one concern that was expressed to me recently was, had to do with fines. And that was a little bit off topic, but it's related to this in the sense that I, I've heard concerns that, that fines for students are not, and there's, we don't have a good hold of this. That fines accumulate to hundreds of dollars and, and really nothing's done year to year. And that we're really missing out on holding children responsible and families for lost ID badges, lost materials. And so if we're making this big investment in materials, I'd really like us to see as a board, and since this is a study session, I'm, I'm just, just, just throwing this out there, to really reevaluate the, the way fines are done in our district. This was expressed to me from someone that has deep knowledge of this. And to have something where we hold children, you know, a high school student is responsible enough that if they lose their badge, they shouldn't be able to come to school and just get a new one printed and just add this on to their hundreds of dollars of fines that never get paid. Someone is paying for that. Same thing with the materials. We're going to get all these beautiful, brand-new materials. We need to hold especially the adolescents, but responsible for those types of things. That's a skill that's part of growing up in life. And so I'd like to see us reevaluate that policy in our district because I think that's something that we need to readdress that will go right along with this, this large purchase of materials. I had a question about the sped curriculum as well. One of the Agile Minds, I think it mentioned that it, it can be used for sped. Are these, do the other programs curriculum, can they also be used for sped? That's another concern I've had, that, that we don't have sped curriculum, where they don't really have things to use for their kids. Can anyone comment on that?
So all of the curriculums, they have varying tiers of intervention that come with them. So that's part of that full meal deal. And so they will be materials that can be used within the classrooms by the teachers. And then we're going to be looking, working with our special ed teachers to pull them in, to show them what comes as the intervention materials. And then having that conversation about what are the specific things that you feel you're going to need to help your kids be successful. So that conversation will still continue. We have a lot of materials that are out there that also align with the materials that we're purchasing. So, we're looking at how do those align and how do they fit and how can we meet them, make them all work together? And then still having that conversation about, because there are some classrooms that are going to need a, a look at. Because this was core materials is really what we were looking at.
So Dr. Richardson, that process of engaging teachers is starting next week. And we actually are engaging what are called content specialists from the vendors that have a deep knowledge and understanding of the materials, including some of the other materials. So for example, Read 180 or System 44, other intervention mechanisms that we already have in the district. And these content specialists can help us draw connections between these core materials that have those intervention layers built in and some of these other intervention programs that we already have, draw those connections and help us identify where we still have gaps. And we're committed to making sure that those teachers have what they need. And like I said, that process is actually starting next week with the secondary special education teachers. So.
Great, great. And a similar question was, I caught a comment about the math in Spanish that I wasn't quite, didn't quite grasp that. And maybe you could help, or the bilingual dual, I mean, how does that work if there's not the, the Spanish? Are we expecting teachers to translate the story problems? At how, yeah, could you comment on that? Someone talked about?
K6 does come in Spanish. So it is a bilingual program in K6. Are you referring to the?
I guess it was, yeah. Which it shouldn't be as much of an issue. Okay, so the math and the ELA were, the Sanderos was, I saw, but the math I wasn't, so the math they do have Spanish.
Absolutely. It comes completely.
That's great. Yeah, that's, that should be a relief because that was another concern I'd heard, right? Because I mean, so if you like mentioned math and, and English Language Arts, that's the primary day of an, of an elementary school teacher for the most, I mean, that's the main. So if that's available, that, okay, that's fantastic.
That was one of the main requirements, I believe, at the whole.
Okay. Now, how would that play in with literacy squared? That's, I know that's another topic. But, you know, if they had this curriculum that's in Spanish, that's in Spanish, there's some, I've heard confusion from teachers about that as well as to what will the role of literacy squared be if we're now have Spanish, math, and English materials? What do you want to comment on that?
So, um, what we're focused on right now is implementation of the core set of materials, once the adoption, once you finalize the recommendation. Literacy squared, balanced literacy, inquiry-based math, problem-solving, no, problem-solving math, inquiry-based science are all strategies that can be used with any sets of materials. So for at least next year, our focus is on implementation of these, these materials that we're getting. Then we can look at, how do we launch strategy campaigns and help teachers make connections between the materials that they've got and these research-based best practices that are, are instructional approaches in our strategic plan. Vendors that we've met with have said, you know, when you ask teachers to take on the heavy lift of implementation of materials, you need to prioritize where their focus is going to be. So for us, for at least the next year, and we'll involve teachers in knowing when the right timing is, to also then add in these in strategy campaigns where we support them in connecting the dots between the new materials and strategies that we've found to be effective with the kids that we serve. We will do that, whether that's year two or, or beyond, in helping them make those connections. But our priority is certainly having our teachers have time to make sense of the materials and then integration into those research-based best practices and strategies.
I apologize because I'm coming, coming late halfway through the game, right? I just started in December, so I, I'm sure you've gone through a lot of this stuff. Could you go back to the one side about two or three slides ago that had kind of the cost breakdown? Yeah, right there, that's perfect. So I, I just wanted to know briefly, what is our, so we essentially have the math K6, math 712, ELA K6, and ELA 711. What are the names of our current curriculum, just to compare what we have right now to what they're going to be getting with this? Do you just know, do they have names currently, what we have? What are the names of the comparable current curriculum for those same grades?
Well, for, we have math investigations for K5 and it would be CMP for grade six. Holt for seven, eight, is it up through high school too?
So what might be easier is on our curriculum website, and I can show you where that is, all of our curricu, our current materials and resources that teachers are using are there with photos and pictures. That, that might be the easiest.
So it's much more, because it's not this, because I was just thinking if there's four, you could just name the four. But you're saying there's the grades or like there's a different one for every grade. Okay, well, we're almost done. So what about the, the ELA? And so how many different groups are there in the ELA K6 and ELA 711?
That's a good recommendation. I would go to the webpage because it's a lot, it's around, the materials are various at different buildings. And so it was, yeah. So it's the literacy libraries are in there and the big books and, yeah.
So there's nowhere near this consistent. We couldn't just pick four things that are, so we're talking about another five for K6 and another four for ELA seven through 11? I mean, I don't know, I just, I don't really have the time to go look at it. I'd just love to, if you could just tell me. But, that's fine. It's more complicated, is what you're saying. That's fine. Okay, no, but I, yes.
I wanted to comment, as we were reading through some of the comments from the teachers and some of them were even saying that, you know, they, they have, after years and years of teaching, that they have some of their own materials. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it, it's, from the parent's perspective, I obviously could see that there is, right now, not the consistency that they're willing to turn.
Right.
This right here.
Thank you. No, that's, I have heard similar comments and that's why it's, see, this is just much more complex. Ah, you know, I don't want to go read all that, so.
I can show you the page with the pictures.
Thousands of things in my life, I don't, that's something I don't want to read. So, but okay, that's good. No, but I appreciate that. I think that's a comment that I'd heard a lot as well. And so I think the, you know, parents as well as the teachers are going to appreciate the continuity. I love the math description, how you're saying it's going to go together. So it's not some new approach and new materials. I mean, it's going to look similar. And I know you showed me that, Corey, in your class, the, it's going to look similar from grade to grade and school to school. So if you change, it goes that great, you're going to have kind of similar materials, which eliminates a lot of this learning at the beginning, kind of how each thing works. So it's fantastic. And thank you. I love going to conferences, but to come to a building that, you know, that's not exotic in the evening, I, it's a great, a big sacrifice. And I think, I, I hope people recognize you and, and thank you when they see you. And I don't know how your fellow teachers, but hopefully I'm sure they know that you, that you did this and, and the parents as well. I hope that, that you receive many expressions of gratitude going forward. So thank you.
I'll make it brief. I just wanted to understand this feedback a little bit. The first question I had, it says you had a pretty low sample size for input on nine to 12 math. But it said three out of seven comments believe that Agile Minds is too technology-dependent. What is, what does that comment mean?
I think, I think when they're looking at that, they're looking at saying that because their materials are online and by saying materials are online, that means you have your teacher textbook. And back here, you can see on this wall right here, on the, on the shelf right there, you've got your teacher textbook for, for the materials. But then you also have online components that you can use as well, that you could, problems that you can put up in class, activity sheets. All the things are online or in a book. And so I think what they're, my interpretation of that was that they were worried that, well, there's so much online that you need to have this computer piece and maybe we don't have enough computers or maybe we don't have enough technology to support that type of thing. And then the other part is now you have to train people with how to incorporate the technology. How do you incorporate the, the online piece and the components all together?
Does it, does it stand alone without using the online portion?
Yeah, it's like, let's say the whole internet crashed and everything, you still have your student consumable books that you're working through. You still have your problems that you have.
I think what that really means is those respondents were probably over 50. I'm just saying. That wasn't very difficult.
Okay.
Well, I'm over 50.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't highly, highly online, that it stood alone also, but.
There, at first, there is a lot to it, of navigation. And so, you know, if you just take a little, if you just look at it real quick, it can be, that's why I think the professional development, spending time. And, you know, someone like Corey or myself in our buildings and other people that, you know, we can, how to navigate, how to get through the system, where to find things. Because it's, you know, it's different than just opening up our red book or blue book or a green book and going to that page. But I, at first intimidating, but a little bit of PD, I think will be.
What, now, it shows a sample size for K to six, teacher input of 90. And then it says stuff like 36 out of 50 chose math expressions as their first choice. So the, the 50, the other 40, did they not respond to a first choice? Or what does that mean?
A lot of the remaining people were, I would be happy with math expressions or every math.
Okay.
And then I think there were two, two, two people requesting purchase.
So 36 chose math expressions, 14 picked one of the other two and 40 picked multiple or no preference?
They said either those, those two, and there was a lot of similarities, I think, every math, but math expressions. The survey asked them to, their top three, so the three that were up there, they asked them to make their first choice of expressions.
So is it 36 out of 90 chose math expressions as their first choice? Is that, it says 36 out of 50.
36 out of 50. There were more people, or 36 chose that than the others who had, like that said, two, two of them were their top choice.
That's the 40 that they hadn't, okay. Interesting. So, and then last question, a sample size of 90 and a sample size of 15 for nine to 12. This is voluntary, right? You guys put it out there. What, what kind of percent, I know we have a thousand teachers in the district, but how, how many elementary school teachers do we have? Is 90, is 90 a good sample size? Is it 6, 700 elementary school teachers?
I have a thought on that too. I mean, I think we have so many new teachers that I think I'm asked to do surveys of at work all the time. And it's like, if I don't have a real awareness, they may not have felt comfortable though. And if you're a first or second year teacher, I mean, maybe they didn't feel, you know, because I'm sure people were aware of this, right? I mean, this is like big thing in our district for months. So, and then some people just may have not wanted to or not have cared. But I think some of it may have been that, that they're a new teacher and maybe didn't.
The other thing that could have happened is if we teamed together, we could have submitted one survey. As a, as a collective grade one team, there's six of us and we submitted one survey. And so, I mean, there, there's a variety of different things that could have impacted the number.
Do you have a subject area? It's not relevant to them.
What's K to six though?
Maybe they just thought you guys were so incredible, that they totally trusted your recommendations.
I was just trying to see if we should gauge enthusiasm by these numbers and if you guys thought these numbers were good or if we, we have some work to do to get, because I would have expected a lot more people coming in and giving their opinion, a lot more teachers coming in and giving their opinions. The numbers seem kind of low, but.
I expected the same thing myself. I was actually quite sad about the numbers. And one of the things that, I had actually had a discussion with someone at the, at my building today about, about the, the numbers and that. Because it has always been something that frustrated me to say, okay, we've got curriculum and structural materials. I mean, we need more people to put their opinions, to put their ideas out there. And, but I think one of the, the persons that I was talking to in my IDT today was saying that she didn't feel, she, just from a cursory look. She just looked at them real quick and I, you know, rank them, new to teaching, how do I rank them? You know, she's, she's not sitting there saying, okay, I'm going to go take these materials and I'm going to use them for a week and try them. And I'm going to try and sell them for a week and I don't have a better idea and opinion. And there's just no time to get that in the schedule. So she, she didn't vote, she didn't give her survey in because she didn't know what to do. And so to, to sit there and rank them and then to say, you know, how's my opinion going to affect the committee if I just picked this one because I thought it looked better than this one, that's not a, that's not a fair system. So I, I think, I think there's, for other adoptions coming forward for next year, there's definitely some, some discussions that should be had about this, about how to get those.
How to get the enthusiasm, 10%, it's pretty low.
Or even to say, to make it require a time, this week, this IDT time will be devoted to everybody going into the lab or on the desktop and getting their surveys in and expressing some type of opinion. Because I think you want that. We valued that, looking for, for our, our decisions was to go through and read them all. And it was upsetting to look and say, where's everybody's responses?
I thought you guys were going to be looking at 40 to 50% of, you know, four, 500 teachers and I saw.
Yeah, but it's probably, like you said, unless they've done an in-depth study like you guys have, it's, it could skew your results. you guys have, it's, it could skew your results. And that, that would be worse than...
Right. And you know what? Quite frankly, I, I vote for, you know, the senators, representatives to represent me, because I trust, well, sometimes, to be, anyway.
Sometimes.
But I, to trust them to do the research, because that really is their responsibility. And I feel like that's kind of where we are with ours. I do want you to know, I looked at all of these online. I only spent a few hours doing this, not the many, many hours. But I was really pleased with the choices that were made, simply from my very limited research online. And so, and I think you guys are the experts for going out. So I, I, I have a lot of hope in this. I think it's gonna, I think we're going to do some great things with this.
I wanted to key in on a piece that Mr. Heitschmidt brought up too. The, these groups of people who did this particular curriculum review process participated in a debrief to help inform the process for next year. So, you know, this was the first one out of the gates. We tried some things that, that maybe worked and we want to always maintain. And we tried some things that maybe didn't work as well. But we tried. And so we'll refine that based on their feedback. And they have already given us pretty phenomenal feedback in terms of how to tweak the process for next year. And who knows, maybe we'll even engage some folks in helping facilitate next year. So, you know, their, their, their expertise in terms of participants and their content area expertise, we'll use that moving forward to continue to refine the process until we know that we have one that's, that is hitting all the marks that we want it to hit.
Well, kudos for looking at lessons learned. And we're, we're always a learning organization, as you guys know. So, thanks for thinking about that. And we'll get, we'll keep increasing participation there, so.
I do, real quick, want to recognize district staff that participated in this. They, Carla was the math facilitator, and Suzanne was a language arts facilitator. They were there shoulder to shoulder in all 3,000 hours as well. Leann and Megan acted as a support team when needed. They got called in, they were kind of pit crew and helped out. And Suzanne, or Susan Sparks, other district administrators that helped with that process, I just really want to acknowledge their hard work and efforts. And again, you know, from being a professional in this district for a couple decades, you know, the legacy that this work is going to leave is, I also get emotional about it. I mean, we, this is a phenomenal time for us, and I'm excited to see what happens for you as teachers and our students moving forward. So gratitude to all, and our district-level administrators as well for participating.
And to your families, because it's not, it's not just you that are making a sacrifice. I have a feeling there's many more than the ones in this room that support you individually. So if you could take our gratitude home to your families and the sacrifices you've made, I would appreciate that.
Well, and the parents too. That, that, I don't, I imagine you guys got paid much to come and sit down for this, didn't you? So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.